This and then we'll go. So, good evening. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. And your participation is your consent to be recorded and broadcast on the town of Akron's YouTube channel. Roll call for attendance. Jim Saner.
Here.
Rich Solano.
Here.
Tony Ramirez.
Here. Who stands for the allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And we'll start with. Evening with public hearing. Heather Redinger from Fulton County Finance Commission and amendments.
You guys received the chart of amendments, proposed amendments from the time commission. Do you like me to read through all of them? Or is there any discussion? I know Rich and I talked about the first one, so I don't think we had any more questions regarding the.
Just, you know, is there a lot limit thought? You know, say you have a lot here in town and it's sixty-five by a hundred and forty. Pretty small lot and you have a house on it and somebody wants to put another dwelling on there.
No, we didn't limit the lot size and with this, with this definition that I added in here. Because detached additional living space was a permitted use in every district. We didn't have these restrictions. Which was in turn started for like mother-in-law suites that they call it, you know. But then people started taking advantage and building two-story homes, calling it detached additional living space, which we couldn't. Couldn't argue that because we didn't have the definition. So we created this definition and changed it to accessory dwelling units, so they can't be, you know, larger than the home. So we added these in here for that particular reason. So it can't be too large. You know, kind of for the whole reason it was added into the ordinance, we just didn't have the restrictions on it.
In those cases, was the larger lot sizes? I mean, do you recall?
Some of them, some of them were on the lake. So, yeah, we didn't have any lots. I mean, they do have to meet the primary setbacks, which are larger than the accessory setbacks. So it would determine and then we have the impervious surface requirement. So there are. But we kind of just wanted to add the step and just to keep it as a small, you know, for the whole intent of allowing it. You know, if you have a college student or, you know, in-laws, you need to take care of her mother and father, you know, something to that effect for the reason of having it a guest house. But not another actual home on your property. So. So that was the reason for this whole definition, just so we had some restrictions. Cause before we didn't have anything. They came in and got the permit and as long as they had a subject, if they were in the county, they were good to go. We didn't have a square footage requirement.
Okay.
Any other questions on that one?
Well, it's still, you can only have one resident, correct?
Yeah, it's one dwelling per tract of land, but as it says, the ordinance read, it used to be temporary second dwellings because they could hook up. Mainly for the county, because then they could hook up to the existing subject, but then the home had to be removed. Well, now the health department requires no matter what, you have to have your own subject system. So it was hard to make them make it temporary when they had to go through the finances of putting another subject in. So then we allowed detached additional living space, but then people started taking advantage of it. And a lot of the other counties actually have the accessory dwelling unit and I just took the definition, like I got this definition from Marshall County. That's what they use just with the minimum of two hundred and fifty square feet, but it can't exceed eight hundred. And our requirements are nine hundred and eighty-four foot for a single-family home regardless. But they cannot go over more than fifty percent of the home that they have there now. So they only have nine hundred and eighty square feet. They can't go over fifty percent of that size. Easier for us to enforce this than. At least we have it backing us up now. So we tell them, no, they can't build it. We have had two, two of them build another two-story home, which in turn created this. Advantage of the language that we didn't have. So.
I have the old one.
Yep. So we're okay with that one. And then the next one, I did remove any utility substations as we, we can't enforce anything with utilities. So I just removed all of that. For solar permitting, I just added some new language in there. It needs to meet all of the building codes with the electrical permit that's required. Another change that will be for you guys as well, hundred and twenty square feet structures or less that's portable. We didn't require permits for, but they still had to meet all the setback requirements, which is hard to enforce if they don't need a permit. So we changed it to they have to get a zoning permit for any structure, no matter the size and if it's portable, if it's a hundred and twenty square feet or smaller. Is just be a zoning permit, not a building permit. So this would be a fifty dollar permit.
What's considered portable? On wheels?
On kids or, yeah, you know, like get those portable sheds, but it's always been a hundred and twenty square feet or less and portable. They didn't need to get permits, but they still need to meet setbacks. But again, that's hard to enforce because we don't know that they're putting them in. So if they get a zoning permit, at least we can tell them how far off the property line they need to be. General commercial, you guys do have a few general commercial districts. So we did add in. Hospital, sanitarium, rehabilitation center as permitted uses. We didn't have that anywhere really in the ordinance and. We added that as permitted use just in those districts. You don't have highway commercial, but you do have a small portion of general commercial. General commercial also, we changed it to add housing as a permitted use instead of a special exception. The reasons not for you guys. And. The data centers, we will be permitting those in highway, commercial, industrial, and active.
Okay, so yes. All right, nice. Then I made a motion that we close the. Public hearing. Second, on paper. Yeah.
Did anybody have the resolution?
Yes. Just move it to the end.
Either that or if we, if you wanted to jump ahead, you're allowed to do that, then Heather could be free to go.
Let's go and do that.
You owe me.
We are going to jump ahead and. The ordinances and resolutions, a resolution eleven dash seventeen dash twenty twenty-five A, a resolution of the town of Akron to adopt amendments to the public county. Zone ordinance to have a motion to accept.
The one. Well, second, on paper.
Aye.
Have them sign it. Oh, you mail it. Is that fine?
Fine, you keep the original, just long as I have a signed document.
Yep, I'll send it to you.
I have one more, two more public hearings. All of these amendments will be in effect January one. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, let's move into our. Regular hearing. Uh, minutes. From the Akron Council Regular Meeting of October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. We have a. Motion to accept the minutes as presented. Motion.
Now second it.
On paper.
Aye.
Well, next. Business. Hey Paul, it's your turn.
Good evening.
That's Paul.
Like to talk to, my name's Paul Pyer. Like to talk tonight about rabbits and the livestock ordinance that you have. One of the things that I did was pull a couple websites. Cora and the agricultural marketing resources center. But since they are not classified as livestock, rabbits are exempt from USDA inspections. There are several web pages that show rabbits as livestock. That's when raised for meat or. There's more mass production type of area. Several. Samples that I've seen is driving through towns like Disco. You have horses, sheep, chickens. Now. Going towards Rochester. Athens, you actually have three sheep right there in town. Take a picture of those and take a picture. Over at Disco, I've seen in Rochester, they have a sign on fifteen eggs for sale. But they're chickens in the back. Before you get to the. Fourteen and twenty, you know, before you get to where. Walmart and all that. On. Side of the road. And. North Manchester. Fifteen. East side of the road, there are chickens inside town. But let's, you know, I want to know why I can't raise. It's at my place, but really looking more of it as an opportunity for meat. Myself. With. Three rabbits. Went back and. Do that and just basically they'll get birthed in. Thirty days after being. Seminated. The rabbits will begin working six to ten. They'll be ready for the butcher in less than three months. If I reach around three pounds. Pounds after they're butchered. Which would be. That's. Twenty-six pounds of meat for me. Every. Three months. I've never raised rabbits. I've done a lot of research on them. Doesn't seem that difficult. Yeah, same. I would have to be for kids down here. And better. Future partners. In the four-H events, how can they raise rabbits when we have an ordinance against them? That makes sense. Pretty much what I wanted to say.
Hey Paul, I, I think that like Disco and Athens.
Yeah.
They're unincorporated. They're not a. They're not an incorporated town. They don't have by or ordinances to go by. You know, we do other towns too. I, I know Manchester, I think allows chickens. Um, but.
Which I, I'm sorry to bring up, but. I pointed you chickens are livestock. That's what they're listed as.
Yeah, I, um. So our ordinance reads, we've read it. Do you have it up, Andy?
Yes, ninety-five point four-six, bred of its livestock in town, ninety-five point oh-one defines live livestock and that includes. The term specifically includes, but is not necessarily limited to. Most varieties of domesticated rabbits. Okay, so. So that's what we have to change in order to change.
Right, and we've had someone in here about chickens. And, you know, we. Here's the thing. This is just my opinion, Paul. And you and I are neighbors. I don't want to cause any hard feelings, but, and we have rabbits in our backyards. Yeah.
Local chat.
But.
They'll have one or two letters in the local chat.
Yeah, the cats wipe them out. That's what happens. Um, so. If you let. That, so we've already said no to chickens, all right? And no to, no to goats and sheep and, and all kinds of livestock. And I'm afraid that if we say, okay, go ahead and you can raise rabbits or butcher. Then here comes everybody else and they want to do this and this and this and this. And where do we stop? So, you know, we have an ordinance that we go by and I understand where you're coming from. I just don't want to open up a can of worms. This is my, that's my, that's me.
And I don't know, well, I would agree, you know, we've had this issue come up this year already. And once you open the door for livestock of any kind. Then other people are going to feel like their animal should be okay too. And, you know, this is a nice, small little town, houses are close together. And it doesn't take long. In your words, to go from three rabbits to twenty-three rabbits. In ten weeks. And then what happens when those rabbits start breeding? So, you know, it can get out of control. It's. As a board member, I would be opposed to any kind of livestock in the tunnel limits.
I mean, shame chickens, you could check them right there on the edge of the test that. Down, why? The, there's a gentleman there that has chickens and I personally wouldn't want chickens in Akron. They make a lot of noise, they're smelly. The spring, a lot of times I get woken up because the rooster over there crowing. I understand that rabbits, I guess one thing I didn't mention, rabbits are. Have no smell. And noise. That you were. Compost or anything like that. Go on. Livestock, at my point of view, is something like. Goats, cows, horses. That I consider livestock. Chicken also because it's listed on. USDA as livestock.
No, that's what it feels.
And I'm okay if you guys say.
Yeah.
It's, it's. For me, it's worth asking.
Yeah.
Just because that's a lot of. Meat, which. It's very good for you. It sells for around twenty-two dollar a pound. Compared to beef, which is not that good for you, a birdie or oxidated pork. That's my main reason for getting, for wanting to get them, I was bringing me.
I understand. I'm just afraid that we're going to open up, like I said, we have a can of worms here. And then it'll be no stopping anybody. We'll have a regular barnyard in our town. At, at this time, right? At this time, I, I, I'm, I'm going to, my neighbors will know. I guess I, we're neighbors and I want to stay friends. So. If I notice there's no rabbits this spring, I'll know what happened.
Well, we do appreciate you coming in.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's brought up last month.
Chickens.
Um, the rabbit. Yeah.
Turned out to have found. Asking the same question.
Maybe.
But, yeah, we, I don't think at this time we'll be changing the ordinance as a dream or it's intent.
Well, thanks, Paul, for, for coming and, and talking to us. And. Anything else?
I thought it was the end. Our fantastic. And that's something I would want, which are chickens.
Yeah. We, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, Midwest Engineering Mark. Okay. About to pass down a packet to everybody. Essentially on the water project, what we've got are the, the pay invoices. I list in the cover letter a summary of everything and then the, the associated documents are passed. So we can go down through the summary letter and then if there's specific questions. Go back and look into specifics and answer them there. The, the first three that I listed are Midwestern invoices and. Normally I don't do three at a time. For some reason I let them back up on me, but. The first two are the remaining part of the design and the bidding. And then the last one covers construction engineering. Since we've been in construction. The actual invoices show the budget. So the first two have been billed out a hundred percent. The last one, the eleven thousand, it's about a third. Built and there's two-thirds left to go on that, which is pretty consistent with where we are on the percent complete survey. Then I have two contractor pay claims of which I've attached also. We review the quantities and, and make sure everything looks appropriate. Thomas Excavating Division One. Which is the water main on the south side of town. They're requesting thirty-nine thousand, thirty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. There's still a hundred and twenty-eight thousand yet to go to complete that. We do withhold five percent retainage of the total amount that they have due. The thirty-nine thousand that we show is after the retaining has been withheld. And it also. On the actual pay claim, it'll show the actual amount of the retaining. I'm looking at it currently, that retaining account is two thousand fifty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. But Thomas requested forty-one thousand, we're withholding approximately two thousand. And leaving a balance of thirty-nine thousand oh thirty-eight, thirty-five. The other contractor invoice that I have is from Asher who is painting the tanks. The amount to Asher this month is fifteen thousand seven hundred and seventy. And for, for the most part, that's going to cover almost all of the north tank construction or painting. Balance to finish is a hundred and nineteen thousand, which is pretty consistent with what's left to complete on the south. And just in FYI of how much retainage we are holding on Asher. Total retainage is ten thousand three hundred and ninety that we're holding back. So it's money they've earned. We hold it back as a guarantee to make sure we're happy with everything. If everything looks, we release it. No, that was kind of a quick whirlwind explanation. So if there's any questions, I'll answer any question you've got, but everything looked forward on the invoice. And, and if. If acceptable to the board, I'd request approval and then Jim's signature on, on those pay claims. And I can show you through the workflow where some of here goes. And then I do have one other thing at the end, but I'll, I'll pause while you. Discuss the invoices and then I do have a change order at the end.
Well, I have no questions on the invoice. You've been monitoring it. Comfortable working the balance.
So what you're requesting is thirty-nine oh thirty-eight, thirty-five on one and fifteen seven seventy on the other.
Yeah, correct. And then the engineering, which the three, and those go clear back to about March. But the, the total due on the engineering is thirty-six oh.
Thirty-six so far. And, um. Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve payment to Midwest Engineers. Um, the sum of thirty-six thousand and twenty dollars, no cents. And also Thomas Excavating and Welding. Total amount of thirty-nine thousand, thirty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. And Asher Industrial Maintenance, fifteen thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars, no cents. Painting. Second motion. On paper? All right.
And just FYI, I will forward these to Shannon. Who's the majority of its grant money and. I don't remember. There may be a form that you'll have to sign in addition, Jim, and I can bring that up when see.
Okay.
I'll get with her and, and give her all the invoices on that.
You say we haven't signed for the other ones, anything other than your pay claims?
Just my say claim. Then she does turn in a draw to them, but I couldn't remember if there was a. Okay. The other thing then that I have is for Yoder Division Two, a change order. And I had mentioned this last time. So in the back of your package, we'll see change order number one. And if you recall. We approved with, with their bid, we approved alternate bids, one, two, and three, knowing that it was a little over our budget. So we set down. Alternate bid number two was for all the SCADA and all the electronics at the wellhouse connecting it. And it was kind of a, as we discussed then, it was a nice thing. It was kind of a wish list thing, but when it came time to. To try to tighten our belts and get back within budget. We discussed about taking out some of the quote unquote fancy stuff where we automatically communicate. And make it a little bit more manually operated. And at that time, our goal was to. Get the price down to where we can still afford to do alternate three, which was the well development. This change order reduces alternate number two, which was originally quoted at ninety-two thousand five hundred and forty. It reduces that by thirty-three thousand one eighty-four. I'm sorry, it reduces it to a new total of thirty-three thousand one eighty-four. So it's a reduction of fifty-nine thousand three fifty-nine, which in turn provides a, it's very similar in price to what the well development is. So now we can do the well development and fall back within, within our budget, everything. It also kind of addresses the scope of, we are still going to have a little bit of. Automation that'll assist Jake in reporting data, but it's not going to have all the. Bells and whistles, I guess, right? So, again, I can answer any questions about that, but. The ultimate final punchline, the change order one is a reduction. In contract in the amount of fifty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
That's good news.
Very good news. And still everything's functional as far as the controls.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, like what we were wanting was just like the catalog. Never have to be able to go in the wells. It's probably a good thing if we still do go in wells. So, yeah, it's not. Well, and. Is this where you were talking about not doing the boring underground and doing like radio communication?
Yeah.
Or whatever?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be, yeah, there will be some communication. And the one nice thing, and I'm not trying to justify, I guess, from that standpoint, but. The wells. And the one nice thing, and I'm not trying to justify, I guess, from that standpoint, but um, the wells are. Less than a hundred yards from the office, so it's 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 easy. I'm doing another job. Where the well's five miles from from the plant, so um. So it's a little closer walk than that other community. So uh, again, if if uh. If that amount, I mean, and I know it's hard to say, we went through uh, both our electrical engineer, we had a. Conference call, I think you were on that conference call, it's been a couple of months now, but we kind of talked through. What was being reduced to get to this amount, so. It brings us back within.
That's what we wanted.
Very good. Well, um. There's no more questions? Do you have any more questions?
No, I know.
I'm motion that we approve uh, change order number one. Uh, reduction in the total uh, for. Alternate bid number two for fifty nine thousand three hundred and fifty five dollars.
All right. That's. So we owe the fifty nine three.
That's a cost savings. That's what I thought. All right.
I just kind of mean what we would ultimately pay for that.
Hey, I second it. Okay.
All right.
Oops. It's all right. It's why you passed us. You're good.
The the last thing I would just point out, um, uh, I'm gonna be up here Wednesday for a wastewater meeting and. We've got a lot to talk about. Um, so I agreed with, and I called Rebecca today, I. I felt like there was enough stuff that we didn't want to bog down tonight's council meeting, was it? We probably got every bit of an hour, maybe an hour and a half of discussion. What ifs and talk about stuff, so we've made some headway. Um, it's still, there's still a lot of tricky stuff in it, so we'll talk about it on Wednesday. Good, so. I mean, that that's all I have this evening.
You're going back tonight?
I am. Wow, going back tonight and I'm gonna go back and work on the wastewater again, someday tomorrow, and then be up here Wednesday.
Question for you on um. Thomas, where's the signature for? The other ones have a post for the owner to sign. This one does.
Didn't notice that I signed.
I just have the engineer and then the contractor, I just didn't know where you wanted Jim to sign for approval.
Yeah, I just assumed that it had a place for the town, but. Um, maybe we add a line at the bottom and just say uh.
You mean to put it over, can I put it over here?
Yeah. Yeah, it's interesting. I didn't notice it didn't have that. How do you want to do? Do you want to sign on now, or do you want to um?
I have them ready, it won't take them. Won't sign this way. Have him sign above Akron Town Council President on that one, have him sign next to the blue date. And then next to the word bye on that one, should be.
Thank you. And I I've seen that form come through a bunch of times, but I've never noticed it didn't have a town signature. And the other one, no, I'm sorry, um. Does it have? Yeah, it does. So it, the other one has the signing line for the funding agency and they never sign it. You know, if you feel that the sign of funding is rural development, yeah, rural development.
I give them to Mark and then he can scan.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you want to just trade these.
I can have them sign these too, just for my records.
How about if I scan and just send it to you and you'll have, unless you want an original signature?
No, I don't.
I'll just scan it in the morning and send you everything.
Okay, we're good with that. I'm good, because then I just have your invoice and the over. I have the cover sheet, that's sufficient for now.
All I have.
You're welcome to stay and you're welcome to go, so now you have a drive home.
Man, I just had a deer, but that's not bad.
Only because my partner, Andy, that was up here last night, he has a doctor's appointment that morning, but I think we're, I think we're fine. We're meeting in Carmel at eleven and we'll easily be able to get here. So I think we'll be good.
All right.
All right.
See you on Wednesday. Thank you.
Okay, utility adjustment request. And the first one is um. Jeff Tilden. Jeff had surgery today, so um, wasn't able to make it. Um, and this is actually uh, for two months, I believe.
Yep, we've we've talked about this one before, he had a water leak.
Yeah, get a mass, yeah, and it was found and corrected. Sixty three thousand eight hundred and thirty four gallons.
Motion approved. The uh, amendment, adjustment request for Jeff Tilden as presented.
And we have one for um. Justin Mann, four oh two West Rochester Street. Purchased property in twenty twenty five, process remodeling, property's been in system usage. And he's requesting an adjustment on his bill for the average minimum usage.
What was the, do you know what happened there at the other?
No idea, but whatever transpired, this is the incident and then it's back to. So, and when I contacted him, he had no idea. What could have caused it, because there's not.
Is it his primary residence?
No, it's the, it was Linda Geiger's old house down at Wittenberger and Rochester Street. The one that they painted gray, he's remodeling that, so there's nobody living there, so.
Uh, okay.
He's not answering, he's not here, so.
The adjustment request uh, for Justin Mann as presented it.
And then we have Gaggen Motors uh, located at two ten West Rochester Street. Uh, they're asking for a adjustment on their water bill.
Um, you have a leak, John?
You know, when when did you fix it? Just out of curiosity, this past Saturday, okay? Just for when I look at reports or something, just make sure.
Yeah, uh, make a motion to approve the adjustment, adjustment request for Gaggen Motors as presented.
Justin?
Oh, you should have the incident report in front of you. Halloween safety and Halloween night both went really well. And links on that and. Had defensive tactic training today, as well as de-escalation training in Plymouth. Finishing up with all state mandates. The first week of December, but did everything out of the way. Jake and I ran the Dodge pickup truck up to Kops gear yesterday. He's running a little bit behind, but we should have it this week. Um, we looked at it while we were there, he's got to take, he's got everything wired, he's got to take the radio. Our equipment. And put it into the new vehicle. And um, tint the windows. And I believe. Does it? Net of banner, um, we'll have it and I'll get with uh, Jeff, um, yeah. Chad Lewis, I also have a letter. But yeah, that's all we're at that. I think he's gonna keep the truck out there, he was stripping some stuff out of it today, and then he's gonna go with Jake. And um. See what Jake wants done as far as lights on that vehicle.
Will he take the lettering off of it?
Yeah, I mean, as long as we request it. He said they. Grab the price off that or if we left lettering. Um, but yeah, I haven't, I would say he's probably going to do that. If not, we can do it, I mean, regardless of it.
He will probably do it. I'll probably just go to the person that he uses to put their letters on it.
Good idea.
And he's got all the.
He's done a great job on it.
I don't know what all the technology is, but. Other than that, guys, that's uh, all I have, probably Friday, if I could, that'd be my assumption.
You anybody have any questions? Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Jake?
Uh, you should have my report in front of you. The North Water Tower is officially full. And it says we are awaiting test results, well, we got the test results back. Good to go. First day back in service was today, so it's back in service. Um, the next line down says the South Water Tower be drained in the next couple of days or weeks. It sounds like from the discussion I had with Mark before the meeting started. They're thinking about waiting until spring to do the inside too. Which is fine with me, um, for a couple of reasons. There's more house fires during the winter, I think. I'd like to have two water towers follow water for the firemen. Um, and whenever the water plant starts getting worked on, it's gonna be. Raw water, it's still treated, going to the system, but if it's any dirtier. Then I would almost rather the dirty water go in the south tower before it gets redone, if that makes sense. The plan is for the water to be superior at all, but. They can fill it up. I have a little.
Yeah, you're bound to have some.
When will they make the determination, the contractor?
Mark said we talked about it on Wednesday. So. The water water main replacement south of town is going pretty well, um. They're down a couple of guys on their crew, but they've still done a pretty good job. They got to the end of it today, they put the new hydrant in on the end. Now they're just gonna have to go back and do all the service connections and all that fun stuff, but. All in all, pretty good, I think.
I thought they were boring that water line.
They bored under um, Sunoco's, or I'm sorry, well, kind of under. Under Sunoco's uh, delivery ramp at their blue building. That was the only little section they bored though.
Think it'd be big, excessive utilities in open cut made more sense to them.
Yeah, there, I mean, I would. I would hate to know how many utilities they'd hit by now. The amount of utilities that they've dug up is ridiculous. And not even utilities, like just people's gutter lines that go down underground, go who the heck knows where. But, yeah, um, so yeah, that's that's going pretty smooth, um. As you guys may have noticed, the wetlands burn off did not go as plain.
I noticed at all.
We're gonna try doing it again this year, but we've got rain coming in tomorrow and then. If you look at the forecast over the next couple of weeks, there's rain, quite a bit of rain, so I don't know if they'll get done. I wish they would, but I can't believe they didn't burn first time we tried. Our visual is here, did some roof cutting, um, they only hit, I think, three mains. But those three mains, it took them, they were here until four and they started at eight, so. We've got some pretty cleaner mains now. But I just had to hit the spots that we've had trouble with over the last year or two and. I think they, I think they did a pretty good job. We're getting some numbers together for tree removal for the uh, paving project next year. Um, I got one quote back, it was like. Uh, seven thousand dollars. So I'm probably gonna get a couple more quotes, but either way, I don't. I don't think anybody will be able to get us in until next year. I know the ones we want to use can't get us in until next year. Which is fine, as long as it's done before they start putting new sidewalks.
Have you checked with the guy out there by Rock Lake, um, on the road before Rock Lake, um. Man, I can't think of his name right now, but uh.
And, yeah, well, been suggestions.
Yeah, check with him. I'm not saying he'll be. See what he can do.
A shame of looking around. Leaf deck after gone. Good, I suppose, it's the worst time of year. Um, especially when the snow comes through and knocks down all the leaves at once, it's terrible.
So we have a little problem with uh, keeping antifreeze in the.
Yes, we are.
And didn't we just have that?
Yeah. I think it was three years ago, we didn't do radiator in it, four years ago.
Thinking, I knew it sounds like we did.
Yeah, and it's been great. But we're trying to baby it through, we've been refilling it, we're trying to baby it through until the end of season, but. I don't know, the last time we had this, we we took it to, I can't even remember who it was, to try. Um, patching the hole, the little holes in the radiator and they couldn't. So if it's little holes in the radiator again, I don't. Have to buy a new one, I guess, again, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know if it's like. That acids in the leads or something getting in there and getting stuck in between the. The radiator and the grill and I don't know, doesn't make any sense to me.
Now, do you have any?
You have any knowledge?
Suggestions, knowledge?
Radiators with leads on them?
Uh, they're everywhere.
But it's, so sure, we want to start one here.
We, so if we, we used to, we used to have a mesh screen that goes over the grill. But right behind that is completely open, so it would just suck it in one way or the other. Then it would get stuck between the screen and the radiator, which is almost worse than it just being on the radiator where you're gonna blow it out. So yeah, I don't know, and I think the the radiator that. The radiator before this one, I mean, it was, it was old, so it lasted a while, so I don't know. I don't know, like I said, like try getting through this year. Um, the nice thing is, it's not really a fast leak. Usually get a couple of days out of filling it, but. But yes, you did hear correctly. Okay. Um, the engine brake organ signs. Have been delivered. The last I knew, our permit was still out waiting to be. Still. So I'll touch base with them again. And find out for sure. But. This is the last I knew. Um, which isn't surprising at all. Just kind of the cookie crumbles with them. Um.
You wanna reach out to him, right?
I, yeah, I don't know. But I don't give this. The jetter back. Um. We're having problems with a water pump leak on it. And. To my knowledge, I don't think the engine has ever even been serviced on it. And. I'm not a decent mechanic. And I wouldn't claim to be one. So. Brown Equipment Company. They do this thing where they will come pick up your machine. Take it to their building, take it to their shop. And do a service on it and give you a list of things that they noticed that was wrong with it. And you can tell them, hey, we want whatever fixed. I mean, they put everything on there, so we wouldn't have to get everything fixed. Um. But it sounds like he'll be here tomorrow to pick it up. And. You should be hearing, we hope by the end of the week. Um, an update on it. Um. But the other, the other option was. Have. Best equipment, which is who we bought it from. Have them come to the shop and look at it for. I think two thousand seven hundred bucks, and that's before. Or I'm sorry, that was. No, that was four thousand one hundred dollars, if they came and looked at it. And that was before any fixes on it. And if we took it up there to them, or over to Andy to them, it was two thousand seven hundred bucks. So we talked to the Brown Equipment guy and I said like. You just think it'll be under four thousand dollars? And he was like, yeah, I'm pretty sure we can beat that, so. But yeah. The park bathrooms are still open. It's a miracle. So. Hope they're in the next couple of weeks.
You can shut them down.
Shut them down. We're so close to just, like, the winters are so mild now, we're so close to just.
Oh, you just jinxed us right there. So, have you done, have you heard anything about? Or talk to anybody about the smell there?
Yes, yes, that was another one. I'm glad you brought that up, I completely forgot about it. Um. I got ahold of Endot. And told them they have a stinky man, or a catch basin.
Yeah.
And I went in and told Adam today. That I asked him if Endot had been there yet, and he said no. I was like, okay, well, they're supposed to be. Put a cone out for them, that way they, they can see where they need to go.
Okay.
Um. But I told him, I was like, I'm, I'm not convinced that this is your problem, but. It's something we can mark off the checklist.
Thank you for doing that.
Um, but I did some looking and there's, there's a thing. That I think we could put in a pipe, that it goes in the pipe. And whenever water flows through it, it opens, but other, other than when water's flowing. Flow through it, it's closed and. But. It's like three hundred dollars for that little piece, so. I don't know. I, I'm, I'm not convinced it's the town's issue, really not. Could be, but I'm not convinced. So. And when I went in there, it smelled. Fine.
Alright.
Um, but I have been in there and it smells like.
Yeah, and, and I have too, I've been in there.
It's bad.
Yeah.
I'm not discounting what they're saying, but.
But he said when you get a little bit of. Rain.
Rain.
It stops.
I don't get it. I don't, what I explained to him was like. When, when it smells so bad in here, how can you go outside and smell nothing? Like if it was something outside that's making it stink in there, why can't you smell it outside? There's been times I've smelled it outside. But not all the time.
I don't know, good what happens with the Endot.
Yeah, could, could be related. Could not be related, I, I don't really know. And. I gave them a list of things to try and they, I think they tried them and they never found anything, so.
So the, that bomb you're talking about is something that we'd have to purchase?
Yeah, it's just like. I would have to even. Look, go down there and look at how we do it. But it's just like a little. You put it in there and then you drill a hole through the top of the pipe and then you thread a. A, like an eye bolt down.
Mm-hmm.
Tight. And it holds it in there. And whenever there's flow, it just opens up.
Yeah.
The water just pushes it open and whenever there's no flow, it closes back. Because that's like the only thing that I could think of from the smell standpoint is like that, that goes down and dumps into the sewer main. But. Most catch basins do. So that's why I don't understand. Why this one would be so bad. As opposed to several other ones. So. I don't know.
Okay. Well, thanks for doing that, appreciate it. Anything else?
I don't think so tonight.
Uh, Eddie?
Um, I talked with uh, Rebecca about the outstanding small claims judgment we have against Melissa Abbott, and so. That has been. Scheduled for a second. Order to show cost hearing for January twelfth. She was served. She was served the last one. Ascasco County Sheriff served her by leaving and mailing. So she did not appear. And even, and when someone does not appear, uh, when they didn't order to appear. Uh, the judges will only issue. Uh, uh. A bench warrant. Uh, only issue a body attachment failure to appear if they were personally served. They won't, they won't do it based on leaving and mailing. Leaving and mailing service is good enough that if you sue me and you prove that they left a mail and I don't answer the complaint, you can win the case by default. But when it comes time to, you know, uh, 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 taking the next step and the resources of. A deputy to, to bring someone in, um, that has to be by personal service, and so. The documentary said personal service, the actual note. The deputy made says leaving and mailing, so. Uh, I called over the court that day and this time the order is gonna specify. Ascasco County must personally serve. So. If it doesn't come back served, if they say, well, you have to, you probably going out there and, and, which you have to have some allowance for that. That they're, they're, they're not required to park a cruiser and wait for twelve hours until someone shows up for this. Uh, so, uh, uh, if. She still doesn't show, then my next suggestion is. That we file a request for proceeding supplemental with the Indian Department. And uh, see if they will disclose where uh, uh. Any employer that's. Telling the state they're withholding taxes off their behalf. We can use that, without participation, we can use that information or insurance. But, uh, better.
Yeah.
But uh, uh, there are also, there are also other judgments. So. I suspect we are not the only people. Which is not unusual. Yeah, and I think that the property uh, served in Ascaso County appears to be. In, which is on contract. So, uh, uh. The other option is we could domesticate our judgment in Ascaso County. And in theory, we would have a lien on. Or equity. If she's in the purchase of, uh, process of purchasing on a contract. Um, uh. That, that could pan out to something eventually, that's more of a, we do that, it's kind of a set it, forget it. Uh, she does not believe you're not unable to, to attempt to full close all property. And say that, so. There's some of the other options, and it's a weird situation to be in, the reason I called over, as I did. Writing in it. I don't want Akron to get an unwarranted reputation for, uh, um. Asking for warrants. For people over effectively debt. I said, I hear that all the time, well, so and so got arrested for all this stuff, say now, you don't have debt persons, no one gets arrested for owing a debt. Nine times out of ten. They got arrested because they got ordered to appear for a post judgment proceeding to answer questions about how they're gonna pay their debt. Maybe show up for here. So those people are not getting rested for owing debt, they're getting rested because they show up when the judge ordered them to show up. She showed up. And answer my questions. And the questions might not lead to us getting paid, but she wouldn't be in the court to show up. Yeah, that's kind of a bad system. I did not hand anything else.
Right. Thank you, Anna. Uh, ordinance is resolutions, ordinance eleven dash seventeen dash twenty twenty five. Twenty twenty six salary ordinance.
Um, I read through it, I did not have any question.
So the one addition, I'll just, for the record, um. With. Um, we talked about with Senate Bill. Or, rolled act one or whatever, but all the changes come with property tax and local income tax. Um. With full-time employees having the ability to have overtime and things of that nature. Um, there wasn't an explicit like three percent raise this year for their salary, however. Um, we figured it in as a nondiscretionary compensation. Um, I talked with, um. HR company that does our. Handbook, just to verify that I was calculating things correctly. So, um, you take. What their three percent raise would be based on their eighty hours a week, and then I also. Um, was to figure their, um, average. Overtime as well. So, um, printed reports and did a calculation and, um, that is how. The three amounts for each employee were determined on, um. And that pay will come in addition to your normal compensation on the last payroll of March and the last payroll of September. Um, is when those will happen, so. Um. And I'll get you a copy of this for your records as well, but just so. You know, and then. As things and hopefully legislation air and clean up, um, this next legislative session, maybe next year's. Can just be factored in and. We'd have to continue to do the nondiscretionary, but that way. We can hopefully sustain. Dead salaries.
Yeah.
And everybody else got a three percent.
Questions here, question in the last one. Good, I'll motion for approving uh. Ordinance number eleven dash. Seventeen dash twenty twenty five. Uh, compensation. Uh, for employees elected officials at the time of Akron Fulton County, Indiana.
No, second.
Resolution eleven dash seventeen dash twenty twenty five. Transfer of appropriations.
Just insurance went up, so to cover the. Installment. I had to. Move funds from. To start building maintenance. To insurance.
Wish to approve resolution eleven. Uh, seventeen, twenty twenty five, point zero appropriations as presented.
No, second.
All favor. Five. We already did carry of this. Minutes. Down. Uh, dockets, uh. Two hundred seventy seven thousand twenty three dollars and fifty seven cents and payroll. Allowance of twenty three thousand one forty nine twenty five.
And dockets, I'll just say, obviously it's a lot more generally than we do every month, um, I had. The payment out to Asher for their. A claim number one. Um, that was in here, so that's why you see the significant increase of. I had to pay from the town's funds thirty two thousand six ninety nine thirty six. Um, and then the portion. Yeah, a hundred and forty eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and that was the grant money from the state. And those are pay claims that we approved back October eighth and just went through the process, so.
Any questions?
Uh, motion approved, uh. The docket. Of seventeen, November twenty twenty five for two hundred seventy seven thousand. Twenty two dollars fifty seven cents.
No, second.
All favor. In a payroll allowance. Motion that we. We, we will allow for seventeen thousand one forty nine twenty five.
Second. All favor.
Alright, bye. And one thing else?
Yes. Um, one thing that came in and I sent it back. Yesterday, our seventeen eighty two notice for our twenty twenty six budget was received. Um, our budget was approved as. Um. Submitted, so. We are good on that, um. I even got an email because Eric, um, at Big Fratelli just gets it. As another outside source to make sure somebody's seeing it because you have ten days to respond, um. In case there would be any changes and, um. Eric forwarded to Adam, Adam responded and said everything looked great on their end, um, we're under the max by twenty one dollars, so that's. Fantastic, I wanted it to be zero, but, you know. I'll take twenty one, so. Outside of that. I don't have. Anything.
Right, Jamie? Right, uh, nothing else, I will make a motion to adjourn me. Yes.
Yep, I have a question.
Okay.
Can I put two hires on my graphic? All right. Get for the environment.
No. I have no idea, I, I don't know anything about that.
I know that we have anything.
Well, how's that, where does that sit it? Well.
I've never been asked that, but I.
Where is it? Or is he just sells some honey?
I don't. He does sell honey, but I wear her as a.
I don't think he's doing it anymore. I like it, yeah, I don't think he is. But I think he did. Sometimes.
I know he did because uh, when Mandy worked with his wife. I think they gave her some honey. Yeah, maybe he's sweeter.
Well. If it's being done for agricultural related purposes. And we have to ask, is it, is, does it mean our definition of livestock? Done for agricultural purpose? If, if it's done for personal purposes. There's no, there's no agricultural purpose to it. Um. It, it's not in the list of animals explicitly included. So i- if you have pet bees. I don't think that's a.
Have you ever done this before? Reference.
Yeah, I have.
Well, if you. You know what? You do this, do it by practice, because I, I'm, I'm allergic to bees. I guess done with the bee, I swallow like a bag of pork spines.
Go on.
Oh, yeah.
All across the United.
I know people who, who raise them now, they're all infected by them.
If you're raising them in town, let's say and you're producing honey and taking it to a farm market, then I think that probably violates the orders because you're doing it for an agricultural purpose. If you're, if you're raising them or keeping them for honey for your own purpose. They can be a better, just, uh, uh. Better, more defensible position if it's not for an agricultural purpose. But again, I, just at first blush, we don't, we don't seem to use the term anyway.
So. I, I'd say it's not in there.
Right, well, quite honestly, I think the, the, the problem, uh, I, I would be concerned about in town is that. You are knowingly close to neighbors and, and literally if, if I were raising bees in town, um. I could, in theory, I could be doing it completely in, uh, uh. In compliance with the ordinance, but if it's fifty feet away from a teenager who, who didn't have his EpiPen. You have to think about, are, are you, uh, uh, do you have a literal liability risk? And that really doesn't have anything to do, so, I could, I could, uh, uh, do, do a lot of things with my property that are permissible. Or not prohibited, uh, and then create risk to those around, around me and those risks are much less if I'm doing that someday. Don't forget that angle of it.
Last of my point of view, if you have bees here in town, should get highs here in town, not. Someone owns size, but high would be in the trees.
Sure, but, but the, the, the difference in liability risk. Colony of bees that come support in my pear tree, the colony of bees I encourage to put in my pear tree, fifty feet away from my neighbor. That could be an important distinction someday.
I'll have to hack down the river just holding onto the limb with all the.
They're gonna be in, they're, they're gonna be in a box, right? Yeah. Yeah, I got a friend that, that raised bees.
Paul, for the record, if you sign anything, please. Thank you.
Uh, okay, uh. Moving to adjourn.